Good morning, everyone. Today is the Town Council regular meeting, Wednesday, July 7, 2021, Town Hall Green Room. We will now all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to item number two, visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I think you can hear me.
Yeah.
My name is Lori Jaffe. I live at Six Sunkus Road, and I'd like to speak with regard to item number six on your agenda, which is the Human Rights Initiative. And I'm speaking on behalf of the initiative. I'm part of a group of concerned citizens that put together and prepared the proposal that was submitted to you last month by Chris Pesante and Sarah Letta. I'm also an involved resident in the town. As you all know, I'm a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which I enjoy and I take it very seriously and feel like I'm at least trying to make a contribution to the town. I also, as one of you know, I was a sub at Morgan for the four years pre-pandemic. So I feel very strongly about, you know, trying to make the, continue to make the town a wonderful place to live. So we appreciate the council considering the proposal, and we look forward to hearing the discussion. However, the draft that was, that's going to be discussed differs significantly from the proposal that we submitted last month, and we'd like to know the thought process behind the changes that the drafters or that this ordinance or proposed proposal made. And so I'd like to ask the Town Council to consider these questions when you deliberate in a few minutes. The first question is why it's labeled and described as a committee and/or an advisory committee. In doing our research for the proposal, we noted a number of towns, I think it was 12 or 13, and all of the towns in Connecticut that had this type of a proposed group were commissions, not committees. And we have solid reasons for requesting that it be a commission, not a committee. We believe that it gives this group, or the proposed group, more autonomy to carry out projects and pursue education. Of course, we would, there would be, you know, continuing contact with the Town Council in terms of reporting and working together. But we ask that you consider changing the proposed draft ordinance and making it a commission and not a committee. The second question that we would like you to address, why the terms have been inserted under the supervision of the Town Council and another portion, under the general supervision of the Town Council. I reviewed, quickly, I'll admit, but I reviewed all of the board's commissions and committees on the website and looked at some of the language that's associated with those bodies. And I didn't see any language at all in any of the board's commissions or committees that have that language under the supervision of or under the general supervision of. So we, the commission is, we'd like to hear your thought process on why this proposed committee is different from every other committee, board, or commission in the town, why the Town Council believes that there's a need to have that language. So we believe that that language should not be in the ordinances drafted. We think that the, the commission or committee, hopefully a commission, should be independent and bipartisan. We have support from a broad array of people in the town, as I think you saw from the letters that were submitted, of all political parties. So we ask that you consider deleting that language, the supervision under the supervising authority. The general supervision, supervision. I'm not sure, we're not sure why in one bullet point it says supervision and in another bullet point it says general. And finally, we're wondering why the Director of Human Services is proposed as an ex officio member. I think the first question is why a town employee would be on this type of a committee or commission, because this really isn't a human services-related commission or committee. And we're not sure if it's the intent of the council that this town employee be a voting member. Ex officio does not by definition mean non-voting. So you note that we proposed that two student members be advisory ex officio, and the Town Council, this draft has kept that language, but there isn't any advisory language in connection with the Director of Human Services. If the Town Council is going to, to want that, that town employee to be on this body, we ask that the membership be increased to eight residents, because we believe that would be a good number of residents who should be involved in this commission or committee. And also, in the event of a vote on some initiative or project, that would be nine votes as opposed to an even number. And since, finally, since this is, was proposed as a draft, we assume and hope that that means that there will be some, you know, animated discussion, and we appreciate your, you know, walking us through the thought processes that led to this ordinance. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Lori. Any other visitors that would like to be recognized?
Hi, I'm Dan Lofgren. I just wanted to let you know I'm here. I have number five. I put my application in for the Economic Development Commission, so if I have any questions about that, I'm in the audience.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Nick Webb. I've put my name in for the Conservation Committee. I'll be here. Please feel free to ask any questions. Look forward to talking to you all.
Thank you, Nick. And please.
I'm Barbara Gibson, and I put my, my name in for the Historic Commission.
Thank you, Barbara. Anyone else? All right. We'll then now move on to number three, which is the Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Margot Burns. I'm the Senior Environmental Planner at the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, and I'm here to assist you with the adoption of your Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So in your packet there, you have a summary of what I'll be going over today. You have a frequently asked questions sheet that was sent out to all of you. You, we have your, you have your meeting minutes from your town meeting that we had for the planning process for the natural hazard mitigation plans. You have a list of our regional projects. Your town annex is open to your town project list, and then there's a sheet in there concerning what FEMA grants this plan will allow you to apply for and what you, one, the most important reason you went through this, this process. Let's see. So the purpose of the plan is to reduce loss of life, reduce damage to property and infrastructure, reduce cost to residents and businesses for things like insurance, repair costs, and taxes, reduce municipal service costs, educate residents and policymakers concerning natural hazards and mitigation possibilities, connect hazard mitigation planning activities to other community planning efforts, and enhance and preserve natural resource systems. And I want to mention that the consultant that we used for this project was Scott Choquette from Dewberry Engineers. He's very, very experienced at doing natural hazard mitigation plans. They were responsible for doing the state natural hazard mitigation plans as well as all the other regions in the state, so we were in very good hands with them, and they did a wonderful job. So every community is unique, but some common mitigation actions include replacement of undersized culverts, floodproofing a school or fire station, purchase of a flood-prone property for open space, or creation of educational material concerning natural hazards and mitigation actions for community citizens. Methodology for creating this plan is that RiverCog created a regional planning team with representatives from all 15 towns that participated in this plan. We have 17 in our region, but Old Sabre and Westbrook decided to do their own plans, and the other 15 have worked with us on this. Your town representatives were Christine Goupil and John Kaskowski. There were three regional plan team meetings. We had one town meeting with follow-ups for edits to their part, your annexes and your projects when needed. And the list of the people that participated in your plan are on their town meeting notes. So we had many police, fire, public works, planning, and various others at the meeting. It was well-attended. We had two public meetings in April and September for comment. We had a public survey that had 75 responses. For the plan to, to come to this point, it needed to go through the Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security at the state level for review and pass that with no comment. It also had to pass FEMA review and came back just with very few comments about some small things in some tables, and one town's notes were missing from the plan, which were added. So that is very, very good for all of you, that it was so easily went through review and accepted by both those agencies. And so the next step is the adoption by you and by RiverCog. And then this allows you for, to apply for grants from FEMA, which you have the list of. So the regional projects that are included in this plan, which is a five-year plan, is, let's see, encourage participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, the community rating system, educate and maintain updates to this plan, encourage best management practices for stormwater, and promote new infrastructure like low-impact development regulations. We need to notify you about grant opportunities, and I think one of them went out yesterday. Encourage generator and microgrid installation. Investigate holding Connecticut Flood Managers Course in your region or Certified Flood Manager Course. Support communities in their water conservation efforts, reduce and prevent the effects of invasive species, ensure integration into other regional plans, endeavor to protect and conserve historic and cultural resources, small business education, encourage participa- our participation in Sustainable CT. Do you guys participate in Sustainable CT at the moment?
Yes, we do.
Yeah. We have really, we've had all wonderful interns working every summer at Cog, and we have two really great ones this year. So I encourage you to continue doing that and keep them busy, because they're looking for things to do. Apply severe, see, apply sea level rise projections created by CIRCA under Public Act 1882 as best available data. Support communities in their efforts to update floodplain management ordinances. Include flood susceptibility model data and municipal plans as a planning tool and help field check data. Assist municipalities in debris management planning. So for your town projects, the group wanted to include all of these. So incorporate natural hazard mitigation concerns into municipal regulations. Implement the results of the State Historic Preservation Organization Historic and Cultural Resource Resilience Project to develop guidelines for historic buildings in special flood hazard zones. Town council should establish a special committee to research medium and long-range impacts to coastal areas from sea level rise, mitigation actions and legal and financial policy implications. Develop a priority list for road reconstruction and elevation. Evaluate and reconstruct culverts in town to meet 100-year storm standards where beautiful. Evaluate each park road. Reconstruct causeway in several locations. Evaluate and reconstruct route one in different locations, not in river roads, to be above face flood elevation. Inventory non-critical facilities potential for public function during an emergency concerning generator and power capacity during power outages like grocery stores, gas stations, and pharmacies, and encourage capacity through technical assistance and identifying funding opportunities. Regionally develop business recovery plans with other municipalities and distribute to town businesses. Retrofit and expand or construct new fire station. Evaluate future feasibility. Coordinate with regional and town human service organizations to assist with those populations. Conservation Commission should include inundation areas when considering open space acquisitions and update open space plan developed in 2013. Update recovery and reconstruction plan and create a rainy day fund for needs during this period after natural disaster occurs. Identify and sign evacuation routes throughout town. Encourage severe repetitive loss and repetitive loss property owners to seek mitigation assistance from Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection and FEMA. Implement dune restoration and marshland protection and circulate existing literature concerning natural hazards in Town Hall and Library and keep Town website and natural hazards with information up to date. So in your list of grants that are at the back of your packet, I think the one that most would be interested in is the FEMA Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities. BRIC is the acronym for that. And there's a 75, 25 match, 25 being the town. And the last round opened in September 2020 and was due in the end of January in 2021. So I'm anticipating that, that same, those same dates will about apply, but you never know, could be a little later or a little earlier. So that is something that we'll let you know about. And then I wanted to mention about the HAZAS data, which is a loss and reduction software that FEMA, it's a FEMA software, and it's used in the natural hazard mitigation plans. And you can see in this table here for your town, riverine flood exposure at risk parcels, critical facilities, and historic assets for the town Clinton. So this is just a sample. These numbers are in millions. But Dewberry did run extensive FEMA mod, HAZAS models for your town, and so we have a lot of data that could be gone through if you're interested in taking a closer look at that concerning loss from hurricanes, floods, and a tornado, no, earthquakes was the third one. So anytime that you would like to go through that, please let us know, and we can dive into that with you. And then we have a flood susceptibility study that was part of our, our planning process. The part of the, it was a, it was a second study that was part of this planning process. The first study was done, research project was done in 2017, and it was a, it's a, it's a research project to use GIS data in determining where flooding might occur using the FEMA 100-year flood zone as a baseline model. And it, it's a, it's a rather complicated model and project, but if you'd like to hear more about it, I, we can come and talk to you about that, too. We'd love for you to ground-truth it with us and help us in our research to try and refine that model. It's, we, we did it through a CIRCA grant, which is out of Yukon, and a grant that came from the Department of Housing in the state after Superstorm Sandy. So it, its purpose is to make our towns more resilient and try and find a less expensive way to do flood modeling, because flood modeling is very, costs millions. And if we can do it more cheaply with the different GIS products that our state has been receiving, and as data gets better and better in that realm, we hope if, we can somehow help bring down the cost of flood modeling. And it's, it's research that's going on around the country, but we have been working on that for the last few years. And I think that's it. Does anyone have any questions?
Margot, a couple, thank you for that report. A couple of questions. You mentioned Old Sabre, and I believe Westbrook have their own plans, or what's the rationale behind that? Why would they not participate?
Well, let's see. You guys were a little bit behind the renewal date, and I, and I think that they just really wanted to make sure that they kept their plans on, on time. And that's, that's all that I, that I know about why they decided to do that.
Okay. And then secondly, it says here, Town Projects, Town Council should establish a special committee. What would that look like? What would it be given to the authority? Would it have in other communities? Are there any models we could use?
I don't know any, of, any in our communities at the moment, but I've certainly looked some, look up, you know, some for you to see what exists in other areas of the state or in the country concerning that. And the authority would, would be whatever it is that your town would want to give it. This is a voluntary, you know, plan to participate in, and its purpose really is for grant application. You have to have one to apply for these grants. But also, it's, it's been really a great process for all of our towns to make sure that these kind of projects are included in your capital improvement plans and that you, you know, really stay aware and up to date on what, what needs to be done in your town to, you know, to build resiliency. So there, it's more than just applying for grants. It really is informing other plans in your towns and the region to the needs of your community.
Okay. And then lastly, the purpose of the plan is to educate residents and policymakers. What would this look like? Would we be giving reports periodically? How would that play out?
That, and also just talking about, you know, pamphlets and informational, whether they're videos or things like that, what you can do around your home to mitigate, what the town can do, you know, concerning staying out of the flood zone and passing, you know, certain types of regulations that will help people do that, because that's FEMA's, you know, a goal of FEMA is to, you know, keep people and structures out of harm's way. So it's really can be any type of information regarding, you know, one of my favorites is for small businesses, helping them understand how to keep chemicals and hazardous materials that they deal with, those kind of things, out of harm's way during a flood, so storing them on the second, you know, story or, you know, in a flood-proof building or, you know, something like that. So it can be very specific, like, like that type of thing.
Thank you. Very informative. Anyone else?
Christine Goupil. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep. Hi, Christine.
Hi, Margot. Thanks so much for the presentation. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on the two towns that did not participate in the study, and that was, they had already started the process, but many of the other towns that Clinton joined along with through the COG utilized this study because of the, I think it was the grant funding that the COG applied for. So there was significantly reduced funds to the municipality to do this, this specific study. So we all engaged together. The process was incredibly effective, because everybody coming to the table had different experiences, and some of them highlighted experiences that potentially we had, this municipality, had trouble with that perhaps we hadn't articulated in the plan. So I thought it was a very productive process having to be participate. And there are, you know, when it comes to flooding, there are no boundaries. There's no municipal boundary, so you have to look at it from that perspective. So it was very useful. I just want to also point out that the governor signed the legislation yesterday that is going to allow for a more effective focus on coastal resiliency and the funding structure through the Connecticut Green Bank. This is going to tie in really well with one of the, the town projects that is listed, which is establishing a special committee to research the medium and long-range impacts to coastal areas from sea level rise. So we'll be able to utilize some of those funds for some of that study potentially. And there's other options within the legislation that will create probably a more robust long-term plan as well, resources that we wouldn't normally have access to. Thank you. And I'd also like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the Lower Connecticut River Valley Multi-Jurisdictional Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update for 2021.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Abstained? All right. Thank you, Margot, for all the information. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number four now, which is the approval of the minutes for the June 16, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
So would.
A second? Discussion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Barbara Fisk Gibson, unaffiliated, Historic District Commission, alternate seat until 6:30, 2026. We have a motion to approve. A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Last one is the Economic Development Commission. There is one alternate seat available for a term until 6:30, 2023. We've received two applications. Dara Anofrio, Democrat, and Dan Lofgren, an unaffiliated. Do we have any motions for appointments here?
Make a motion for Dan Lofgren.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we, is it just one of the two, or?
One available seat.
All right.
One available seat.
Of these two people.
Of these two, correct.
Well, can I make a motion?
We have a motion on the floor right now that we'd have to vote on.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
You want to talk during discussion?
Well, I wanted to make a motion for the other person, but I guess I can't do that.
Right. We have a motion on the floor that we'd have to vote on at this point. So is there any other discussion?
This is Christine Goupil.
Mm-hmm.
We have a motion on the floor for Sephore Canada, but I want to bring your attention to Dara Anofrio, who has significant experience in the business community. She's an intellectual rights attorney as well, and she has been participating in the Economic Development Commission's meetings for quite some time before she had an injury and was interested in coming back to engagement on that commission.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I misunderstood. I thought there was two positions available. So can I pull back my, my, my second? Is that a possibility?
Can we do that now, or no? We'd have to vote on the motion. We'd have to vote on the motion first, right, on the table?
Secondary of the motion is withdrawing his vote.
So then, open again? Okay. If you want to withdraw, then we'll move on and look for another motion?
We'll look for a second. There's a motion.
We'll look for, I'm sorry, look for a second on the motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor. You'll look for a second.
Correct. So we'll look for a second for Dan at this point.
Can we withdraw the motion and have a discussion before we make a motion? I'd like to hear more about.
Yeah, you can do it either way. Discuss, you know, with the motion. Discuss candidates.
Well.
I mean, you can withdraw. I mean, if he wants to withdraw the motion, we go through, and I mean, we have a candidate here.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to hear more from him.
Sure you want me to withdraw? Oh, yes. I can do so.
Okay. Well, I would like to hear from Dan.
Dan?
Thanks. Yeah, so a few familiar faces around the room a little bit. Nice to see you. So my name's Dan Lofgren. So I grew up in Clinton. I moved out for about 10 years for college and grad school and Navy. Came back this January, so back in town, which is nice. Families-
We have a motion on the floor for Sir Canada, but I want to bring your attention to Dara Anofrio, who has significant experience in the business community. She's an intellectual rights attorney as well. And she has been participating in the Economic Development Commission's meetings for quite some time before she had an injury and was interested in coming back to engagement on that commission.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I misunderstood. I thought there was two positions available. So can I pull back my, my, my second? Is that a possibility?
Can we do that now or no? We'd have to vote on the motion. We'd have to vote on the motion first, right, on the table?
Secondary of the motion is withdrawing his vote.
So then, open again? Okay. If you want to withdraw, then we'll move on and look for another motion?
We'll look for a second.
You will look for, I'm sorry, look for a second on the motion on the floor.
Motion on the floor.
Correct. So we'll look for a second for Dan, at this point.
Can we withdraw the motion and have a discussion before we make a motion? I'd like to hear more about.
Yeah, you can, you can do either way. You can discuss, you know, with the motion, discuss candidates.
I mean, he can withdraw, I mean, if he wants to withdraw the motion, we go through and, I mean, we have a candidate here.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to hear more from him.
Sure you want me to withdraw? Oh, yes. I can do so.
Okay, well, I would like to hear from Dan.
Dan?
Thanks. Yeah, so a few familiar faces around the room a little bit. Nice to see you. So my name's Dan Lofgren. So I grew up in Clinton. I moved out for about 10 years for college and grad school and Navy. Came back this January, so back in town, which is nice. Family's been here since about 1980. My dad served on, chaired Board of Ed, was town treasurer for eight years. So I have some knowledge of the workings and he's a good friend of mine. So some knowledge base to pull from as well. You know, so we're back in town for, you know, a reason. We want to raise our son here. So obviously very, very invested on, you know, how the town does in terms of my own background. So I went, got my Bachelor's in Science at Springfield, my Master's from Emory down in Georgia. That's in public health. And I've been in healthcare management for the past 10 years, mostly on the practice management side. So helping, most recently I was at a hospital system in Rhode Island, helping with their medical group and managing primary care and behavioral health and their hospital services. Now I do consulting work in healthcare management where we leverage business intelligence and pull from my background to help groups around the country, ranging from, you know, the size of Middlesex's medical group to larger than Yale's medical group about how, you know, they're doing productivity and sustainability wise and helping them, you know, grow their, their business and be high performers. So I think that's most of my background that's applicable anyway. Any kind of questions?
Well, my interest in you, Dan, if I may, is the medical part of it. And to draw more medical office buildings, medical services here to Clinton.
Sure.
And we now drive to Guilford or to Saybrook or wherever.
Right.
It would be nice to have some more offices here and possibly with your background could help us draw people in.
Yeah, I would agree. And I have done whether closing or opening offices, you know, and layouts and, you know, what our least expenses were, kind of how they were outfitted. So I can pull from that as well, certainly.
Dan, number one, thank you for coming back to Clinton. Very much appreciated. If by chance you were not approved today, would you be willing to take on some other in-town endeavor? Because it's clearly you're, you're qualified to do this. The other candidate is as well. I don't want to discourage you because I know you personally.
Yeah, no, I mean, I know the other candidate, right, has a business in town, has a legal background, so obviously another good candidate. It's what the commission needs, right? Someone that's more of the, you know, business operations kind of expert, if you will. I do have a certification, a Lean Six Sigma as well, or someone that, right, that has that, you know, small business ownership, you know, background. And that's a choice of what's the best and the need with the current composition of the commission. But yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, you know, for lack of a better term, I'm, you know, all in here, so I'm going to find a way to, you know, invest my time in the town.
Let me just remind my council members here that we have two incredible candidates. This is almost unprecedented when we're trying to find people for boards and commissions. And here we have two very qualified people that votes well for the health of the town.
Just checking the book, by chance, is there an alternate position vacancy also?
That is it.
This is the vacancy for the alternate.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, there's two fine candidates.
Anything else?
Yeah. Well, not for Dan.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't know, I, I don't remember if Christine mentioned this about Dara. She also was on the Board of Finance. And I think at one time was even the chairperson for a short period of time. So she has all, already been invested in town. And it was mentioned that she, she had to withdraw for a period of time due to illness. And now she is recovered to the point where she would like to get back involved in the town. So I think that she certainly also would be a tremendous candidate for this position.
Any other discussion? So we'll look for a motion. Anybody have a motion to appoint?
Yeah, I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dara Anofrio for this position of alternate on the Economic Development Commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, Christine Gopiel.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Dara will be appointed to the alternate seat. Thank you again. All right, we'll now move on to number six, which is the Human Rights Initiative. We do have the draft that Carl had provided to us. There were the questions. I did receive an email from Chris Bisanti as well with the same questions that were brought forth by Laura Jaffe. So I guess I can just let Carl speak to the fact of why it was set up this way. And in that way, we can kind of make a better decision on how we want to move forward with the questions that they have.
Sure. And the proposal that the council got, remember, looked like this last week, two weeks ago. The draft that was submitted to the council under membership makes reference to appointing members regardless of political affiliation. To make that appointment regardless of political affiliation, the advisory committee structure, as the council knows, you can pick whomever you want. You're not bound by minority representation. If it's an ordinance, as the council knows, there's minority representation, just as we went through with the EDC appointment right now.
Could you speak up a little bit? It's a little hard to hear this. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Sure. I don't know what you heard, didn't hear.
It's my hearing.
The advisory committee structure allows for appointment of anybody regardless of political affiliation, which is what was stated in the draft that was provided. An ordinance requires minority representation. So then we're down to Republican, Democrat, Green, unaffiliated to fill the spots. So it's just a matter of vehicle. If the council wants to go one way or the other, I'm just following what was written here in, in the write-up. The reference to under the supervision of the town council is a direct out of the Guilford example, which was noted in the write-up, where Guilford has their commission under the general supervision of the Board of Selectmen. And again, providing that advisory role to feed information to the Guilford Board of Selectmen about programs and education. So it's, it's a similar, similar adaptation from another community.
The other question was.
Why the director?
Oh, so the other, the other question was why add the Director of Human Services? The Director of Human Services was excited about the project. He wanted to be involved and was hoping that a seat might be available for him to participate because he had some experience he thought he could bring to the table.
Anybody have any other questions?
If you want to cut him? Your, your choice.
Any other comments from commission members?
Well, I guess I have a question. Number one, committee versus commission. Is there any difference in the way that the committee or commission would operate? What's the difference between the two? That would be, that we would need to know to determine if a commission would be appropriate or a committee would be appropriate?
I mean, there's really not a difference, right?
I don't think there's a difference operationally.
Right.
The difference is in the appointment structure. So if you want to appoint anybody to the committee, advisory committee will let you do that. If you create it by ordinance, then you have to have minority representation kick in on all the appointments made by the town council. It's really a question of how you want to appoint people. So I just took off of the notation here of regardless of political affiliation. Regardless of political affiliation is the committee, which lets the council have the widest degree of latitude in appointments.
My comment would be is, you know, this is a large undertaking and it's certainly a very important undertaking. And to start off as advisory committee, I think is the proper step of moving into this type of situation. When you form a commission, going through the ordinance process and whatever, you're locked, you're like lockstep, you know what I'm saying? You're really getting right into it. This gives us a chance to, to grow. And certainly it could grow into a commission later. There's no, there's no thing that you can't later make it into a commission. But I think this is the proper way to approach this idea is to start off with a committee. And then as we grow and find out what all the parameters are of it from other places around the state, we certainly can incorporate, I mean, encompass and then try to become a commission later. But I, I like the step of, of being an, you know, advisory committee in the beginning.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else? Yeah, Laura, you mentioned that as a commission, you'd be afforded more autonomy. Eric, we got to keep this here. Yeah, I'm sorry. That's okay. As a commission, they would be given more autonomy. What specifically would that entail? Just so I have a sense of what direction we should go with this. I mean, again, I don't, I don't think there's much difference. Like Carl said before, you know, taking the politics out of it and making it an apolitical advisory committee, then you're not tied to anything. You're not tied to making sure there's a minority representation. You know, it's a great, listen, this is great and I think we need to do it. And, you know, going based upon what they're talking about is making it apolitical. And advisory would probably be the most apolitical way to do it. Right. Any other comments? Everybody good with it?
Christine.
Go ahead, Christine.
This is Christine, hi, this is Christine Gopiel. So my inclination, and I would like to just have a discussion about it as well, is to take the recommendations of this group who has brought it forward and make an amendment to the, the Human Rights Initiative, I guess essentially do their bylaws, to incorporate their, what they're asking for. And I wanted to get a sense from the rest of the council whether everybody would be in favor of that or not. Some people have already spoken advisory versus having it as a commission. Are there other considerations? Is there anything that's an issue from town manager standpoint that has been raised thus far?
I mean, their recommendation as, as the group that came forth, their recommendation was to make this apolitical. I mean, their comments were they didn't want to make this a political committee, commission, whatever we would call it. So I mean, ultimately, I think that's probably why it was presented the way it was presented. So we are going on the advice of their comments that they presented to the council. I mean, the only other thing that, I guess that's out there is Human Services Director, you know, whether or not, you know, you know, his involvement in this committee is, you know, I mean, one way or another, that's up to the council as well. I mean, you know, he's interested and he brought it forth, you know. But again, at the end of the day, is that something that?
Can I ask why it is that you feel a commission is more, more in line with your goals than a, than a committee?
Can I, can I speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Right, well, I mean, this is, this is comments through the council now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But I'd be curious to know why their, their, what is their unrest with that aspect? It seems, it seems like the work would proceed in the same way, that there, it doesn't affect their goals. So why is that? Why is that an issue?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, please. No, that's fine.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just come over here so you can be heard. That's okay.
Carol, it's partly because the commissions, the bodies that we looked at, the groups, 12 or 13 of them, for one thing, are all commissions. And Carl mentioned looking at Guilford, which is one of the models that we studied. Guilford's a commission, not a committee. But the thing is, I, okay. But I believe that a commission also has, appointees to that commission would, I assume, will be done the same way that other appointments are done. Republicans can, and unaffiliated and Democrats can set, can endorse candidates like for other commissions, like the way that I was appointed and other people have been appointed to other commissions. So when we say bipartisan, I, I'm not sure why the commission is looking at this as a political move. It's really a bipartisan approach by, with concern to citizens. And I think that a commission looking at the other towns in Connecticut, that's why we think it's more appropriate to be able to, to be more autonomous and not be under the authority of the town council. Yes.
That doesn't really answer my question.
Oh, what was your question?
My question is, I mean, I understand Guilford's doing it, this town's doing it, that town's doing it. That's an argument that's used in every aspect of, of what we do here. But I don't understand how the designation for you, your committee and your goals, why not being a commission would hurt your work.
I don't know that it would hurt it, but I believe that like other commissions in the town, I believe that it would give a little bit more autonomy to perhaps recommend projects and carry out projects. It's commission, it's a combination frankly, Carol, of the council proposing to change it from a commission to a committee and inserting language that is not found, from my limited research, in any other commission board or committee in town. So it's a combination of the council apparently wanting, or whoever drafted this, wanting to make it a committee, and also inserting language that I just couldn't see in my limited perusal of the, of the website, that's in no other body that's under this town's offices. So to me, to the initiative, not just to me. It's a combination of language that is limiting, that I don't see anywhere, that we don't see anywhere else. So it's, that's part of it. The other committees, I didn't see anything, for example, on the Tree Committee or the Veteran Services Advisory Committee, or the Sustainability Committee, or the Energy Committee. I didn't see any of the language that had under the supervision of, et cetera. I think a commission gives, would give this group, this appointed group consisting of unaffiliates, Democrats, Republicans, I believe, and I believe the, the initiative believes that it would give more autonomy to be able to promote educational programs and advise the council and advise other groups. I hope the answer is your question.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
And just, I just want to read something just from the town charter, just because I just want to clarify everything as far as, because there's a lot of talk about the directive of the town council and what responsibilities we would have. So in, in our town charter, the council shall direct, supervise, and shall be responsible for coordinating the activities of all the officers, departments, boards, commissions, and agents of the town to which the council, council has power to appoint as outlined in this charter. So that's just something that reads in our charter that kind of gives us some direction as far as that goes. So appointing and putting people, again, advisory, we're not appointing. So an advisory committee, I mean, they can be bringing forth anybody they would like, obviously regardless of political affiliation. So that does play into kind of how these things and appointments go. Anybody else have any comments? Would, any comments about the Director of Human Services?
He's, he's willing to be involved. He's interested in being involved. He's an ex officio member.
Would that play into the voting and changing?
Rewrite it to say ex officio non-voting. Take him out or eliminate his participation. Up to you.
So two options on the table. Keep him in and make him a non-voting, or take him out altogether?
Well, certainly he was the Director of Human Services. I think he should be in some way, in form, involved with this committee. But I do agree that you could put the connotation in that he's a non-voting member. I think I could go along with that. Be an ex officio non-voting member. What do you think?
Well, I, I would happen to agree with that. I, if he's got information that would be valuable for this committee or commission, I think we should use it. But I think that it would only be in that capacity to offer his knowledge, but not as a voting member.
I just would like to add that I have had several conversations with people in town, people who don't want to be on the record and write letters and stuff like that, but conversations with people who have questions about this initiative. And, you know, I'm an older person. I speak with older people and there's not a lot of understanding about why this is of understanding about why this is necessary in Clinton. Obviously, they're not of a population that, that would be affected by the work of this committee, but maybe they are the population that needs to be affected by the work of this committee. So my initial impulse is to make this a committee, not to designate it a commission that would be, as Carl has said, put in place by an ordinance. To work with it as a committee, and as your work evolves and takes shape and progresses, perhaps then move on to become a commission and, and go through that process of bringing the, bringing the steps forward. My, my thoughts right now are to adopt the draft that is presented here as it reads with the addition that we have spoken of, so that the committee can get going and commence the activities and programs that they have mentioned, discussed, and plan to bring forward. I like this draft. I think it covers the bases and is not onerous and will allow this group to get to work on what they want to do. I, and those are my comments.
I personally think that this is a needed and most appropriate commission that is needed in this town, needed all over the country, but it's certainly needed here in Clinton. And obviously, they did a lot of research, and my personal opinion is if they feel that they want it to be as a commission, then I'm going to stand by their recommendation and vote for a commission.
Any other comments? So I guess we'll look now for a motion to adopt the draft for the Advisory Committee on Human Rights with the exclusion of voting for the Director of Human Services.
I'll make that motion.
Excuse me, Chris, are all ex officio members then, you're saying? Which of the students as well?
Correct, we'll make them all, yep.
Okay.
Yep, I'll make that.
Second.
There, let me just clarify the voting. Yeah? Students. Yeah? Good. All right. So then it would be adopting this with all ex officios nonvoting. Okay, Carol, you good?
Mm-hmm.
Second? So all the ex officios are nonvoting members? So there's two students and the human, the Director of Human Services will be on the committee, but it will be a nonvoting. You good with that, Dennis?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, three, two. Okay, passes.
I thought, it's Christine Goukial, is there not a full vote count?
Did you, there's a full vote. You didn't vote.
No, I didn't hear. I didn't hear that you did it so quickly, so I'll just...
The motion was to accept the draft on the Advisory Committee on Human Rights with the exception of the two ex officio student advisory members and the Director of Human Services ex officio member have no voting rights.
I just didn't hear the votes went so quickly. I didn't hear how many we had for in favor.
Okay. What is your vote?
I would be in favor.
Okay. So we're good, four to two. Correct?
Yes.
Correct. All right, that passes, four to two. Okay, that's where it is. We're good. All right. Thank you. All right, we'll now move on to the Adam Stanton lease agreement. This is something that is an ongoing basis, so the suggested motion is a motion, the town of, the town council of the town of Clinton hereby authorizes and directs the town manager to sign a lease agreement with the Adam Stanton House to rent a piece of land containing .898 acres for a term of six months, starting on July 1st, 2021, and ending on December 31st, 2021.
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have a discussion.
Yep.
Who pays the bill for this? Is this from general government or is this from, like, Pearson upkeep?
General government.
Okay, which is essentially Pearson upkeep. But just curious, because are we going to move this stuff or is it just going to be...
Exactly. That's my comment.
So if you remember the Capitol Plan discussion...
No, I don't.
Okay. During the budget discussion, monies were put into the Capitol Plan to pay for removing the playground.
It's a big playground.
Correct. So there is value to the playground. Park and Rec wants to recycle the playground somewhere else, so we have to remove the playground either by direct demolition or preserving it and relocating it. So the Capitol Plan put money in to relocate it. We didn't, yeah, well, the money's only available on July 1st, so we just started the fiscal year.
It's the 7th now, I mean...
In addition to removing the playground equipment, we also have to restore the site, plant grass and some...
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain, thank you. All right. We'll now move on to eight, the Senior Program Coordinator. We all received the job description of the coordinator. Is there any comments or discussion on what was put forth under this job description?
What was the budget for this again? Oh, I'm hitting all the high notes today.
Set up as a part-time position, working a hybrid schedule, so I think seventeen thousand was what was budgeted.
That sounds, okay, thank you.
Okay. Comments? Yep?
Yeah, I just, I'm certainly in favor of this Senior Program Coordinator. Just on the general purpose, I just had a question with, the goal of this position is to build a following for senior services and programs to lead toward transitioning to a senior center. I don't think that sentence is appropriate under the goals or the general purpose of that coordinator. That's not the position, the coordinator's job is to build a senior center. I think, you know, if you go by that and we don't get a senior center, that's one of the goals that she didn't perform, he or she didn't perform. It just doesn't look good there. I mean, I'm, I know eventually we're going to get to the senior center, we're going to build it, and I'm all in favor of it, but I just don't think it belongs in that, that particular paragraph. That's not the goal of that senior program coordinator. He or she's goal will be to provide services and programs for the seniors of the town of Clinton.
Should we change that language to talk about viability of the senior center? I think we're all here in favor of that, but I know there's...
Well, that's like a sec, to me, that's like another discuss, you know what I'm saying? It's not part of a job description or put that label on...
Strike the last line.
Yeah, the description of a job. You know what I'm saying? That's like saying, you know, I point you to something and you got to build a new town hall. You know, I mean, you know, it's, it just doesn't look good, I don't, you know, I don't know why it's there and...
Dennis, I don't agree that it's saying that, that that position is to, the goal of to create a senior center. It says to build a following for senior services and programs. That's what the job is.
To lead towards transitioning to a senior center.
Right, well, that doesn't, to me, that doesn't mean that his job or her job is to create a senior center. It's, it's creating the services and programs that eventually would lead to a senior center. That's not, in my way of thinking, that's not telling me that this person's job is to create the senior center, but the services and the programs that would lend to creating a senior center. So I expect this person, because of the work that they do, will eventually lead to a senior center.
You agree?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Tim. I think, I think it's how you parse the sentence there. Honestly, I don't think there's any harm in that sentence. Sorry.
It's all right. That's the American way. That's why we discuss these things. I mean, to get these things out. That's what's good.
The other reason I would like to leave that in there, Dennis, is because I want people to know that eventually the goal is to create a senior center.
Well, we all know that's the goal, there's no doubt about that.
Let's keep it in there.
I agree.
Everybody good with that?
Yep. Christine Goukial, I have a question regarding the line of authority, the reporting structure. I just want to make sure that this is the most productive use of the town manager's time, as well as the most efficient way of coordinating those services. I wanted to bring your attention to the fact that our social services, who falls directly under the Human Services Director, does coordinate everything for the elderly and veterans. They also do Medicaid, Medicare, and they all, and they also have the NEAR Trust, which is for seniors 60 and over, and coordinating the veterans' benefits. I'd hate to see the town manager's time get caught up into trying to make sure there's coordination between the Human Services Department and staff, while there's a director that currently exists that could help implement that and ultimately a director reports to the town manager. So my question, whether or not it would make sense to amend the job description to have this personnel report directly to the Human Services Director?
The advisory committee that the council charged with putting, studying this issue, looked at accountability to different departments, and their recommendation to the council was to put it under the town manager. The last town council discussion regarding this was also put it under the town manager. So this reflects the last town council discussion on the topic.
Anyone else?
Make the motion?
Sure.
I would like to make the motion that the town council of the town of Clinton hereby approves a job description for a part-time senior program coordinator and authorizes the hiring of such position as funded by the town budget.
All right.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Christine, Christine Goukial, again, again, I would just say I will obviously vote in favor of this, but I am reluctant in that it is not a reporting structure within the Human Services Department, who really it should be falling underneath that cognizance. But I will be voting in favor.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Obstain, thank you. Line item number nine, line item transfer request. We all have the request in front of us, communications, moving part-time position to full-time for schedule stabilization and overtime control. Does anybody have any comments on this before we vote?
Christine Goukial, again, I do have a question on benefit. Since the, the line item transfer and the position structure is not, does not follow technically the person, you're only budgeting for the role. Currently, there's a medical buyout, so this transfer does not accommodate the typical amount that the town budgets for any position for medical. And I'm wondering what the rationale for that is, because medical is typically substantially more than would be budgeted here for a medical buyout.
It's Captain James DePietro from the Police Department. In this instance, when we're trying to work out the line item transfer, the part-time dispatcher, who hopefully we will be moving to full-time, we know that he's going to participate in the medical buyout, which is why we did the line item transfer request that way specifically.
Thank you.
And, and I do appreciate that, but ultimately, when the town budgets for a position, you have to budget for the actual amount that we would typically budget for, which is an average of the medical benefits, which is substantially more. So again, my concern is it's, it's not based on the person necessarily, it's based on the position that we structurally put in there based on the new contract. The new contract stipulates a certain benefit, an average of that certain benefit, and then therefore making sure the budget is accommodated. You know, if this person stays, you know, we certainly know the medical buyout is something they have an option, but they might decline the medical buyout later on and then go into the benefits package, and that will not be accommodated within the budget.
That is not how, that is not how the town budgets for healthcare. So we budget healthcare based on the census of the employee that opts for our healthcare. Those handful of employees that are on the healthcare buyout, we budget the buyout expense. And the only ability to transition from buyout into, going backwards into full medical, is at open enrollment, where we would need to be told, and we can accommodate to adjust the budget census as it goes forward to the town council when we're in the budget process. So the budget, as established and passed by the voters, includes funding for paying benefits for those employees that elect to take benefits, and that it pay, it provides funding only for buyout for those employees receiving buyout. We don't over-budget healthcare by assuming that everybody's on benefits. It's, it's got a sharper pencil on it now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Anybody else? Okay, so look for a motion to approve the transfer funds request as presented, moving part-time position to full-time for schedule stabilization and overtime control.
Some moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Obstain? All right, we'll move on now to 10, which is the fire marshal fees. Why don't you go over this quickly?
So this, a follow-up from town council conversation, looking to establish a fee structure for the services rendered by the Office of the Fire Marshal. So you have to have an ordinance establishing a fee structure. We looked at a number of other municipalities, had discussions with Jeff over what is fair to the building community in this town versus what some other towns may charge. That's how we came up with the fee structure that's proposed here. Just so you understand, all of Jeff's work is, is not exactly the same in terms of what the building official does. So while it's proposed to be based on value, as declared within the building permit, he's not really involved in single-family home construction. He's more commercial or industrial or multifamily in excess of two units. So he's a smaller subset of the building department activity. Then there's specific fees associated with liquor permits, blasting permit, that's allowed by per-state statute. And then there were some fees for copy of incident reports and, and the like. So the other towns we looked at had specific dollar amounts based on value, which, again, tried to look and make sure fees reflect actual level of work. We wanted to make sure that what we were charging reflected Jeff's effort and time.
Okay. Comments? Carol?
So, this being a direct process that the fire marshal is involved in, and that, I'm just wondering if any portion of these fees could go towards funding the fire marshal's position? Right now, the fire marshal is part-time. They, that has always been a desire of theirs, that they could get more funding for their department so that they can expand their... department, so that they can expand their, their work. So, and I know Christine brought this up when we had this initial discussion a while ago about bringing fees in for the fire marshal. Did you see anywhere in your research that that happens in other towns? Or does it all just go back into the general fund, and he would have to petition to gain some, not some profit, but some use of the additional funds to the town?
It's a general fund revenue, so it goes into the general fund, like all other municipal revenues. To carve it out and make it off-budget, it means establishing it as an enterprise fund, where the revenue has to square against all the expenses. So, the expenses that are in the general fund all have to be trucked out to the special revenue fund. It also creates an odd motivation to make sure that there's increased fee activity to support the overhead and expense of the fire marshal, when he does have a public safety responsibility. So, just like every other department generating revenue, this would go into the general fund, rather than as a separate standalone off-budget activity.
Because, and I ask that, because with the building projects that are coming into Clinton, and there are some big ones, we're all aware of, well, as noted in here, you know, that when he says that systems exceeding 5,000 square feet, or as you say in here, may be required to have an independent review conducted by a pre-approved reviewer. Now, there's a fee that would be incurred by the fire marshal that, you know...
The applicant pays the fee.
The applicant pays the fee.
The applicant gets the consultant to do it. So, while your thought process may be, in the near term, there's gonna be a lot of permit activity. In years, when there's not a lot of permit activity, then the general fund would have to subsidize, and you're transferring tax dollars into covering the gaps. So, it's cleaner just to put it in as a general fund revenue.
Okay. Anyone else? No? Okay, look for a motion to approve an ordinance establishing fees for the Office of the Fire Marshal.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
When would this, when would this happen?
It's an ordinance, so this is the first read. You have to have a public hearing.
Yep.
Public hearing has to be scheduled. You've got another ordinance that we also have to have scheduled. So, then you have to get through the public hearing process, and then you go after that.
Okay, so, thank you.
It's not today.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Thank you. Item number 11, the council discussion on future projects. Our first discussion is the blight ordinance. Did they have a meeting? Did you guys meet?
Yes.
You got a little update? No? On the blight ordinance? Did you guys get together and meet?
Yes, yes. And we were very productive.
It's what we're looking for, some production.
Well, I didn't know if Tim, or Dennis, or Mr. Kilda...
I actually included it in my report, Carol.
Yes, I saw that. I didn't know whether Chris was referring to that.
Just don't outshine him, okay? It's in his report.
Some crib notes there for you.
Okay, well, we got a lot of work done, and then, but there's more tweaking that needs to occur, so we probably have another meeting or two ahead. But I think we made great headway, and a lot of clarity as to our blight ordinance, and where we wanna go moving forward. There were aspects to blight and blight enforcement that had never occurred to me personally, so it was a very enlightening discussion, and we are going to come out with a better, stronger, more uniform policy going forward, I believe.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments here?
You guys, Matt, thank you for doing it. I heard some great things about the meeting. Statutory authority to levy special assessment on blight and property, now this is part of Carl's report. Did that come up? Did we make any headway?
Well, that's what we have to...
That's one of the topics that was discussed. The committee wanted to get a little more information, in terms of how it would be structured, how it would work, so that they could continue to deliberate on the topic.
Yeah, that was interesting.
Anyone else?
On item 11, because I...
Yeah, on 11.
All right. Yeah, I was, mentioned this to Carl the other day, that it's July, it's the beginning of the new fiscal year, but it's also time to start thinking about the next budget. And last year, as a council, we did not give Carl any input as to how we would like to see the budget move along. You know, I think as a new council with, you know, we're all kinda feeling our way, we haven't provided our new town manager with input as to where our priorities might be. I mean, I, looking through town processes, I see that there are aspects of the town that are underfunded, that could use maturing to the rules that they have today, and maybe some that need to be taken back a little bit. But anyway, my point being, that I think as a council, we need to have a discussion as to what we wanna see happen with the budget for the next fiscal year, so that Carl can provide that guidance to departments early on, before they begin their budget discussions. They would have some idea of what our ultimate goal is, so that we have our hand on the tiller, and we're not just being blown around. So, I would let, and it's July, these people, people are already, I mean, like the Board of Ed is already thinking about their budget for next year. And I would think that the sooner we can provide some clarity as to what we would ultimately like to see, sooner is better than later. So, I would like to have that sort of a meeting, where we can discuss our priorities.
Okay. Anybody else? Any comments? All right.
Carol, that's a great idea. Thank you. I compiled a list of items I'd like to at least put out there to my fellow council members. Things I'm, just, I wanna have a conversation about the possibility of a town plan, or is that viable? Is it feasible? Is it something we would even wanna get into? Nothing, no, just let's toss it out there. Pearson, we gotta get on that. Whatever that entails, I think we have to definitely get on that. Looking back over the Plan of Conservation Development, there's so many interesting items on there, and I just need some encouragement as to what direction to go. I know some of the members here who follow the council and what we do. Open door, please visitors, please tell us where you think this town should be headed. I think we all have open ears to that. I'd like to speak on behalf of my council members and that. Carl, a lot of these things I have listed here, you've included in your report, and I very much appreciate your reports, when it comes to things like MIRA, when it comes to things like the blight ordinance, the auditorium. But I also did get an email from a former student who would like to act as a legislative aide, interesting idea, to the council as a whole. Is that something we could possibly look into? It's another way to get some of our young people involved in this process. That's something there. I know Carl Fortuna in Seabrook does a monthly report as to what's happening in the town. I don't know if that's a possibility. We would ask, get Carl to do another thing, or even Chris, just to show the towns' folks what's going on. I don't think we could lose something like that.
I've asked to that end, and I'm waiting to hear from the editor of the newspaper. That's above our reporter's pay grade, so...
Gotcha. And lastly, I very much appreciate getting some insights from Christine, our state rep, and Norm, our state senator, as to things we should be aware of. Carl, you, again, with your report, you provide us with things that are going to affect us as a community. Would it be beneficial to include Norman, Christine, providing us with updates as well? So, there's a lot. I just wanted to get it off my chest, and see where people stand on any or all of those items.
Thank you, Eric.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Anybody else? All right, we will then move on to number 12, chairman's reports. I do not have a chairman's report today, so we'll move right into the town manager's report.
Okay, so Carol reported on the blight subcommittee, so we'll be working to have a document come to the council that has amendments. I've got drafted for them, a red-line version for areas that would be cut, and others, areas where we'd be beefing up language for their review. Provided for you some background material on the recent marijuana legislation, in terms of what municipal authorities are within your purview, or land use's purview, for when sale of marijuana can take place, what local options there are to regulate, control, or ban, ban the sale locally. Household hazardous waste is a service that's delivered through the council of governments. There are satellite collections, one of them takes place in Clinton, but the majority of it takes place in Essex. There is an insurance issue that the COG is working on. Unfortunately, it increases rather dramatically the cost of insurance for any kind of environmental liability associated with all that regional household hazardous waste. So, there's gonna be a spike coming in the cost of that program. Insurance was about $1,600, $1,700 a year. It's gonna balloon to 10 times that amount. So, right now, COG is working through what's an equitable way to distribute the expense back to the towns that participate by sending waste to Essex, versus those that don't do household hazardous waste collection, or don't send it to Essex. Yet another entity is asking for consideration of funding under the American Recovery Plan Act funds. So, I gave you an overview of the program, I gave you an overview of some potential expenditures. The council's gonna need to spend some time focusing on a budget of how you want to allocate those resources. So, the COG is looking for a slice. There's a projected percentage, but the desire was to get more detail in terms of what would be a regional COG-level project. The regional arts community is asking for an allocation. I've asked the local arts community to give me an idea of what their expenses would be, so that that can go into our discussion. On the social services front, the Shoreline Soup Kitchen is looking for towns to make commitments, so that they can buy a refrigerated truck to aid in food distribution to those that are food insecure, and again, looking for ARPA funding to go into that. So, there's a lot of asks, and we need to figure out how those dollars should roll out. MIRA, as Eric noted, remains a question mark. They are positioning themselves to shut down the Waste and Energy Plant in Hartford. They're also positioning themselves to truck waste out of the state of Connecticut to landfills out of state. What the ultimate direction and ultimate policy is gonna be is a question mark. There's a desire to increase recycling opportunities. Some bills recently passed, which is supposed to support that endeavor, but you still are gonna have a chunk of solid waste that'll have to be dealt with, and at least in the short term, it's geared up to be sent out of state. If you've noticed, the Clinton trolley in town more than what we've seen in the past, I did give you information on the Park Connect pilot, which is coming out of Nine Town Transit, which is a DOT-funded project to increase public access to Hammond Asset. So, the Clinton trolley is running with DOT subsidy at present, to connect the public to get to Hammond Asset. There's two stops, one in Old Seabrook, one in Hammond Asset, and then one in Clinton. And we did have our kickoff meeting with the UConn Stormwater Corps. There were a number of professors, and a number of engineering students, and landscape architecture students, that were involved in, will be involved in the project. They looked at 12 properties in town, both town-owned and Board of Ed properties, to look at low-impact development opportunities on those sites. And since we were able to participate in this program, that opens the door to a minimum of $22,000 in grant dollars that UConn has, that can actually pay to do a low-impact development project in town to help with stormwater management. Another item I have to call your attention is more of a follow-up. The council gave direction to sign a town beach concession stand contract, to get somebody in as quickly as possible, but I need you to ratify signing it.
Do that now?
So, if you could amend the agenda and ratify the signing of the beach concession stand contract, that would help close the loop for what we said we were gonna do.
Okay, so we'll make a motion, or look, excuse me, look for a motion to amend the agenda to include line item number, would have to go all the way out to 17, or where can I put it?
Can you just say 13A?
13A. So, make a motion to amend the agenda to add item 13A, to ratify the signing of the beach concession stand contract.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain?
So, now we'll move on to, thank you, Carl, first of all. Any comments or questions for Carl?
Excellent.
Good. All right, so now we'll move on to 13A, which is a motion to ratify the sign, or have the town manager ratify the signing of the beach concession stand contract. Motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? Thank you.
Thank you.
14, Town Council Committee Liaison Reports. Anybody?
I got one quick.
What do you got?
As a member of the Morgan, well, actually, the School Roofing Committee, I'm glad to say that finally, I think we've got all the roofs on all the schools done. Probably took about 20, 25 years, but it's over. And also, what I'd like to say, this recent project, which was the Joel, finishing off the Joel Roofing, and the Elliott, we're gonna come in, I'll be sending official figures, I hope, next month, 'cause we're ready to wrap up completely the project, and it'll be well under budget, for once. We come in almost a million dollars under the budget. The approved bonding for that situation was $2,780,000. And when the bids came in, we immediately saved $29,000, 'cause the bids came in at $2,760, 632. But barring any unforeseen, no acts of whatever, we spent only $1,656,112. So, we're gonna come in well on the budget, and that'll be a positive thing for once, when it comes to all those roofs, and hopefully, they're all good for a long period of time this, these last two, of course, will get the 30-year warranty on them. We took the big warranty on them, so hopefully, I'll be able to wrap that up in the very near future.
Thanks. Anybody else? No? Yep?
Just quickly, the Connecticut Water Authority commissioned that a couple weeks ago, and they're still waiting for a final decision from PURA on the rate increases. And I think they have modified what they're charging the town, or the fire hydrants, trying to get some support, I think, from the towns, and PURA, but PURA has now delayed that decision until the end of this month. It's been pushed back. Rates are increasing, it's just how much.
Okay. Anybody else?
Inland Wetlands met last night, they define work, they do struggle sometimes to find a quorum, so I wonder if we could reach out to Dan, if he's willing to help out, and put his name up as a possible member for that. I know some other groups sometimes struggle to get quorums, so there is work to be done. If we have volunteers, let's travel.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, moving on to 15, to make, look for a motion to go into executive session, invite Carl and Mary.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? Thank you, Jim. We are back from executive session. No decisions were made or votes taken. We will now go to item number 16, which is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a good day.